Hi ladies, we're on to chapter nine today. And what a chapter, it just keeps getting better and better. I'm sorry I said nine, I mean 10, so we'll just start off with a bang. So this is the next to the last lesson for this semester. And you will be listening to it the week after Advent Sunday. So we'll do that two weeks in December. And then we'll be through for this semester. So you'll recall with the last chapter, which was the last, the fifth and the sixth woe. So we've still got one more woe, and it was the fifth and sixth trumpet. So we've had the trumpets before that, we had the seals. Remember that the trumpets go back over the same timeframe? And when we get into chapter 11, I'm going to pull out the different approaches to Revelation, not just to the millennium, but to the book of Revelation itself. And you're going to see some differences pop up. But once we get to 11, then we're going to be looking towards then the next cycle. And so, but there are going to be a timeframe talked about. Some of you know 1260 days, 42 weeks. And so, and then in other places, it's time, time, and half a time. Time, two times, half a time. And so that framework is usually in the perspective that Redeemer would teach this and that I would teach it, is considered to be the time between the first coming of Jesus and the second coming. So these seals and trumpets demarcate that time between the first coming of Christ and the second coming of Christ, and lead right up when he comes back, the final judgment. So you see that they were leading up in each case, the seals, and then the trumpets. So these last two trumpets, you recall, were the Locust, the army of Locust, and then the army of 200 million riders and the horses that were killing a third of mankind. And so you can see it's approaching. The very last trumpet will be the last judgment, you see. So that's just to get us back in the framework of where we are with chapter 10. Then we're in today, the interlude, the beginning of the interlude. So the interlude encompasses chapter 10 and then the first part of chapter 11. And then the seventh trumpet is blown at the end of chapter 11. So that will lead us up then to take a Christmas break. And really, the end of chapter 11 and chapter 12 are what I call Christmas chapters. And you'll see why when we get there. But let's pray, and we're going to dive into chapter 10. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for this season, we're approaching Advent, and all that it means to us, a time of waiting, a time of anticipating a Savior to come. And so we ask, Lord, that you heighten our senses to take you in spiritually during this time. Lord, even in the time in which we live, during COVID, during presidential race that has not been absolutely declared, we pray that your peace would be upon us. You came to give us peace, and we ask for that, Lord. We ask for your direction today as I teach, and at those times, would the women listen? And lead and guide us to go deeper with you. Dear Lord, we do pray in the name of Christ, amen. So I am recording this on the 22nd. I'm at the church, the Advent party is being prepared out on the Hawthorne grounds, and I think 200, a little bit over 200 are expected to be coming in four different intervals. So things are afoot over here. And now, as we approach chapter 10, we can see things are afoot in the book of Revelation. So let me read chapter 10. And remember this comes after the fifth and sixth trumpet. Remember the first four trumpets mirrored some of the plagues of Egypt. And then it got more intense and to leading up to the sixth trumpet, where a third of mankind was killed by that army of 200 million. And as we saw with the seals, after the sixth seal, there was an interlude, remember, of the 144,000 being sealed? And they were seen as an army at first, the army of God, and then as a crowd in heaven rejoicing in the salvation of the Lamb, where there was no more tears and no more pain. But we're not out of pain yet in the book of Revelation. But we're taking another interlude. And let's look and see how this interlude is the same and yet different from the previous one with the seals. This is the word of the Lord from Revelation 10. "Then I saw another mighty angel coming down from heaven. He was robed in a cloud with a rainbow above his head. His face was like the sun, and his legs were like fiery pillars. He was holding a little scroll which lay open in his hand. He planted his right foot on the sea and his left foot on the land, and he gave a loud shout like the roar of a lion. When he shouted, the voices of the seven thunders spoke, and you could hear [roar]. And when the seven thunders spoke, I was about to write, but I heard a voice from heaven say, 'Seal up what the seven thunders have said, and do not write it down.' Then the angel I had seen standing on the sea and on the land raised his right hand to heaven, and he swore by him, who lives forever and ever, who created the heavens and all that is in them, the earth and all that is in it, and the sea and all that is in it, and said, 'There will be no more delay.' But in the days when the seventh angel is about to sound his trumpet, the mystery of God will be accomplished, just as he announced to his servants, the prophets. Then the voice that I had heard from heaven spoke to me once more. Go, take the scroll that lies open in the hand of the angel who is standing on the sea and on the land. So I went to the angel and asked him to give me the little scroll. He said, 'Take it and eat it. It will turn your stomach sour, but in your mouth it will be as sweet as honey.' I took the little scroll from the angel's hand and ate it. It tasted as sweet as honey in my mouth, but when I had eaten it, my stomach turned sour. Then I was told, 'You must prophesy again about many peoples, nations, languages, and kings,' thus saith the Lord." So in this chapter, we've got to identify, who is this mighty angel? What is this little scroll? And then, why is John eating the scroll? So we've got some things to explore. It seems like a short chapter, there are only 11 verses. And remember the last chapter, one of those woes, the very first one, covered itself by itself, 11 verses. So this is a short chapter, but there's no brevity and the depth that it takes us to. So let's get started. Who is this mighty angel? And you might remember in chapter one, let me reread how the book started. "The revelation of Jesus Christ, which God gave to him to show his servants what must soon take place; he made it known by sending his angel to his servant John, who testifies to everything he saw." That is the word of God and the testimony of Jesus Christ. So this brings back into mind Revelation 1:1, when that angel came to speak to John. It also brings to mind the 5:1. Remember that 4 and 5 are throne room scenes, and 4 emphasizes Father as Creator. And then 5 emphasizes the Lamb himself, who sits on the throne. So here we have an angel who came to John at the very beginning to announce what he needed to do, and to carry to him the word that had come from God, relayed to Jesus, relayed to the angel, relayed to John. Now John's relaying it to first century Christians and to us. Chapter 5 says this. "Then I saw in the right hand of him who sat on the throne a scroll with writing on both sides and sealed with seven seals. And I saw a mighty angel proclaiming in a loud voice, 'Who is worthy to break the seals and open the scroll? But no one in heaven or on earth or under the earth could open the scroll or even look inside it.'" Remember, John says, "I wept and wept, because no one was found who was worthy to open the scroll or look inside it. Then one of the elders said to me, 'Do not weep.' See, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has triumphed. He is able to open the scroll and its seven seals." And so these are tied into that angel who appears. There are many angels in the book of Revelation, as you know. Some commentators think the angel that appears here, this mighty angel in chapter 10, is Christ himself. Why do they think that? Well, look how he appears. Let me read again. He was, first of all, he came down from heaven. That doesn't necessarily mean it's Christ. He was robed in a cloud. Well, think where you've seen that cloud. In the first chapter of Revelation, Jesus appears in a cloud. There was a cloud in the wilderness, remember? He has a rainbow above his head. And there you see the rainbow over the throne in the throne room of God, on which God himself sat, showing himself as an emerald like radiance. And then the Lamb, you recall, was seated on the throne as well. So there's a rainbow which calls into mind the covenant that God made with his people. So this ought to be reassuring to the churches that are hearing this for the first time. "His face was like the sun," and of course, we've heard that before in relation to Jesus. "And his legs were like fiery pillars." Where have you heard of the pillar of fire before? If not in the wilderness, where God showed himself to be with the Israelites. Remember, a cloud by day and pillar of fire by night. And so some say this is Christ, but many, 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 and I'm going to take the opposite view, say it's a mighty angel. Because if Christ is the one holding the scroll in his hand, and yet it seems that Christ is the one speaking from heaven, there's a voice that comes out of heaven that is separate from the angel who appears in this chapter. And that is the voice of Christ. So it looks like this truly is a mighty angel who reflects the glory of God. His majesty underlines the authority and the source of his message. We're going to see as he straddles the land and the sea, that sense of authority, that he's got legs like pillars of fire. Can you imagine the scene here that's being pictured? So this does relate back to the commissioning of John in Revelation 1:1. Think about it just a minute. Here an angel comes, and as we're going to read on, and have already read, but we're going to dive into this too. He was asked to eat that scroll and then prophesy. And so we're going to have to look into, well, what was in that scroll? And is this the same scroll that showed up in chapter 5? That I've just read the introduction to? Or is it a different scroll? But it's that John ate a scroll in order then to prophesy. And so this commissioning, if I go back to the first verse, listen again. There is a four-fold unwinding here. The revelation of Jesus Christ, which God gave him to show his servants. So it went from God to Jesus Christ to the angel that showed up in Patmos with John and led him on this visionary trail. So then John gives it out to us. So we're seeing that unwind here. So out of the throne room comes this mighty angel, and he has the scroll, that Jesus now has unsealed all seven seals. And so this scroll, notice, lies open. Notice too, the position of this angel. I alluded to it just now. He puts one foot on the sea and another foot on the land. So he is, it's as though, and his voice, he roars like a lion. That is another reason why some think he's the lion of the tribe of Judah. But again, my view, the view of many commentators whom I and this church respects, is that it really is an angel. And that the voice that is going to speak to John is Christ's voice from heaven speaking to him. And so the angel then places, it seems like he's huge on the scene. Now, if this were in Patmos, if we were envisioning Patmos, he's in the Mediterranean Sea, and his foot is on Asia Minor, if you can have some picture of that. And his voice roars because it's filling the whole earth. In other words, this message is for everybody. Nobody is going to pass out of this life that doesn't have to meet the Lord and what the judgment that's coming. And so the warning has got to be worldwide. And so here we have an angel with the authority of Christ, of God, coming down, and now is announcing to John in a very loud voice. Then John hears these seven thunders. Well, what are these seven thunders? Remember, Paul one time was taken up to the seventh heaven, and he had a word, and he couldn't say what it was. Also, remember that, excuse me, let me get there. Remember these verses. This one, you probably know. Deuteronomy 29. "The secret things belong to the Lord, our God; but the things revealed belong to us and to our children forever, that we may follow all the words of this law." And so there are things that God does not reveal to us. That was Deuteronomy 29:29. 1 Corinthians 13:12 says this, and you'll recognize this verse if you've studied the Bible for long. "For now we see only a reflection, as in a mirror; then we shall see face to face. Now I know in part; then I shall know fully, even as I am fully known." So we don't know everything. It will be revealed at some time, but that time is not come. Ephesians 1:8-10 says this. "With all wisdom and understanding he made known to us the mystery of his will according to his good pleasure, which he purposed in Christ, to be put into effect when the times reach their fulfillment, to bring unity to all things in heaven and on earth under Christ." You know how I've repeatedly said, how Revelation brings the whole Bible together? Well, the reason I read all these verses from Old Testament and New Testament, so you can see that. It's not that we haven't heard these things before. It's that now it becomes laser, laser clear. Now those other reasons for saying it come into focus. So there, in the scroll itself presented in chapter 5, we understood that to be the purpose of God in this world, and then beyond. And so the Bible has given us that. And yet, there are some things that the Lord does not want to tell us yet. You know, if you think about your own lives, in fact, I'll just give you a personal example. In my family, I may have mentioned that my oldest niece, who lives in Jacksonville, Florida, has been diagnosed at 44. She was diagnosed with colon cancer. She's had surgery, she's had her second chemo treatment now. And she has three months of that treatment. But it has, since her mother died of cancer, and my mother died of cancer, and my mother's father died of cancer, and my father's father died of cancer, and my mom's siblings died of cancer, my father's siblings died of cancer. There might be a genetic thing. And when my niece was diagnosed, we began to talk about the genetic test. Her brother is going to take that genetic test. And eventually, she will as well. But I was telling a niece in Greensboro this yesterday. They came over, we spent time together. And she said, "Well, you know, if I'm going to die of cancer, I don't think I want to know. Why would I want to know?" And I told her, she has a three-year-old. I said, "It's because if there was something you could do preventative-wise, if you knew it early, then wouldn't you want to do that for your child? For yourself, for your child, for us? But there are those things that if we knew they were going to happen, it's maybe a blessing for us not to know until we need to know that they happen. What these things are remain a mystery." And it is poetous, says this. I love the way he phrased this, so listen to this. "God reveals the substance of his plan, but hides many of the details. We must be content to trust God in the midst of our partial knowledge, confident that he knows everything and governs everything for our benefit." That really is the truth revealed in Romans 8:28 through the rest of the chapter. So let me read that again and let it sink in. In other words, what we are saying, God's word that he has given us is sufficient. In fact, Peter says that we have everything we need for faith and godliness, for life and godliness. And so his word is sufficient to us, but poetous says this. "We must be content to trust God in the midst of our partial knowledge, confident that he knows everything and governs everything for our benefit." That angel standing on the land and the sea shows authority from God, from Christ, over everything. God is sovereign over everything. Even those misfortunes that enter our lives, those tragedies that enter our lives, those disappointments, those things we wished would not have happened, that sometimes we fault ourselves, and sometimes we blame God. And what is being said here is, whatever comes, it's okay. You're going to be okay. It's not that you won't suffer in this life. Nothing like that is said in the whole of the Bible, really, whether it's the Old Testament or the New Testament. In fact, you're promised to suffer by Christ. So it's not getting out of suffering. It's about being able to trust this God, who's a covenant God, and he's reminded you in here with this rainbow. He's a covenant-keeping God. He has promised to hold you in his hands. You're in the book of life. You will be with him, and nothing can keep you from his love. So again, a sense of grounding and hope. And in that way, it is like the interlude that we saw in the sequence of the seals, of the sealing of the 144,000. You know, there was a baptism today in the service. Now I'm speaking, I'm saying this on the 22nd, but you're not going to get it until after the 29th. So there was a baptism in today's service. And that water was a sign and a seal of God's covenant promise to belong to the family of God. And that's what's being reassured here. I want to speak just a minute about this roaring like a lion, again, to show you how Revelation takes Scripture that has come in the Old Testament and uses it. But this roaring like a lion, a sound that reverberates through all the creation, is spoken about in Jeremiah. So listen to this, Jeremiah 25:30. "The Lord will roar from on high; he will thunder from his holy dwelling, and roar mightily against this land." See, that was a roar of judgment against the land. Amos 3:8. "The lion has roared; who will not fear? The sovereign Lord has spoken; who can but prophesy?" Can't you see the link between those and what we're reading here? Even that the roar Uh, even that the roar of the lion and the thunder uh show up in uh in Jeremiah twenty-five, thirty, and this idea of who can prophesy, it's the one who has been given the word from the Lord, from Amos three, eight. Then uh but if you want to know a bigger reference, it's Psalm twenty-nine, verses three and four. Uh, these seven thunders uh speak of divine power and judgment. "The voice of the Lord is over the waters; the God of glory thunders. The Lord thunders over the mighty waters. The voice of the Lord is powerful; the voice of the Lord is majestic." Uh, in Psalm twenty-nine, David mentions the voice of the Lord seven times. Um, and you know that seven stands for, fill in the blank, completeness, um perfection, some say. But um so this is a powerful passage here. Uh, first for the people of God themselves to know that the Lord is with them. Um, and then for those who oppose the Lord, that the Lord is against them. And we're gonna see more. But um speaking of uh an angel that came to both um comfort them, assure them of God's covenant-keeping promises, and then carry forth and move towards the judgment that is coming against all those who do not believe. Um, we've seen an angel appear like that before. Um, and I want to speak first of all of um God him, God himself, um of Christ. During the days of Jesus's life on earth, he offered up prayers and petitions with loud cries and tears to the one who could save him from death, and he was heard because of his reverent submission. Let me read that again, this is from Hebrews five, seven. "And I want you to hear the anguish in Jesus. During the days of Jesus's life on earth, he offered up prayers and petitions with loud cries and tears to the one who could save him from death, and he was heard because of his reverent submission." That is from Hebrews five, seven, um that that incredible book about the priesthood of Jesus. And then I wanna go back to Luke. When did he offer up these loud prayers and loud cries and his tears? Uh, listen now from Luke twenty-two, thirty-nine and following. "Jesus went out as usual to the mount of Olives, and his disciples followed him. On reaching the place, he said to them, 'Pray that you will not fall into temptation.' He withdrew about a stone's throw beyond them, knelt down, and prayed. Father, if you are willing, take this cup from me; yet not my will, but yours be done." Now listen to this next verse. "An angel from heaven appeared to him and strengthened him. And being in anguish, he prayed more earnestly, and his sweat was like drops of blood falling to the ground." Remember, the Hebrews passage said, "His prayers were heard because of his reverent submission." Remember, he totally and perfectly followed God without sin. In that way, he differs from us and other priests. Um, but he gave his life for us, and it's that one who gave his life for us that now, from the book of Revelation, is speaking. So let's go back there. Um, this is what he says. Um, "The angel swore by him who lives forever and ever." By the way, forever and ever, those words appear more times in the book of Revelation than any other book of the Bible. No doubt, we're leading towards uh the consummation, and we're gonna live forever and ever. And so he says, "He swore by him." So the angel raised his right hand, just like you do if you go into a court of law and you swear to tell the truth, and you've got your hand on a Bible. Um, and so he swore by him, there's no higher swearing. Um, and so he said, um, "And swore by him who lives, who created uh all that is in them, the earth and all, and the sea, and all that is in it, and said, 'There will be no more delay; but in the days when the seventh angel is about to sound his trumpet, the mystery of God will be accomplished.'" What he's saying is, once we get to the seventh trumpet, that's it. There's no more delay. It's not that um, it's not that he's speaking that there's no more delay. This was written in the first century, remember? And so we're gonna say, "Well, uh, that's not true. There's been thousands of years delay." Um, but he's not, he's speaking not chronologically here for all of time. He's speaking for the time of uh this earth, leading to a time when time disappears. And so he's saying, "Right before the seventh trumpet or the final judgment comes, there's no more delay." So he's saying, "If you wanna repent, do it now." "Then the voice I had heard from heaven spoke to me once more. Go take the scroll that lies open in the hand of the angel who is standing on the sea and the land." By the way, the sea and the land, if you look and do a word search just in this chapter, you'll see it repeated three times. Um, three is a symbolic number two. And so it's, we gotta get it, that the sea and the land, this is worldwide, why? This is cosmic. The the words in this scroll pertain to all of life, throughout all of time, throughout all peoples, all nations, all tribes, all languages. Either they will follow the Lamb, or they will oppose the Lamb and be against him. And then there is a a divided path for where they end up. One, in these promises that God has made to his people, those who've been sealed, those who are being taught to now and reminded of this God with a rainbow, the one that keeps covenant with them, the one who will make sure that they reach their final destination, and against those who rebel and refuse to repent. "Then the voice that I had heard from heaven spoke to me once more. Go take the scroll that lies open in the hand of the angel who is standing on the sea and on the land." So I went to the angel and asked him to give me the little scroll. He said to me, "Take it and eat it. It will turn your stomach sour, but in your mouth it will be sweet as honey." Let's talk about this little scroll. Um, let me find uh the description. Back in verse two, "He was holding a little scroll which lay open in his hand. He planted his right foot uh on the land, and he gave a loud shout." So um, but this little scroll, there's a debate about, is this different from the scroll that we saw in chapter five, or is it the same? Um, most think this is the same. It's the same scroll, it's just that it now it's open. It's uh, Christ has broken the seals, it's begun to happen. And so John takes it, he eats it, and it is as the angel says. Well, what is this, sweet and sour? It's sweet as honey. Listen to Psalm nineteen. "They are more precious than gold," that is, the law of the Lord, the statutes, uh the commands of the Lord. Uh, "They are more precious than gold, than much fine gold. They are sweeter than honey, than honey from the honeycomb." Psalm one, nineteen, one oh three. "How sweet are your words to my taste, sweeter than honey to my mouth!" And then Psalm thirty-four, eight. "Taste and see that the Lord is good; blessed is the one who takes refuge in him." So the the word is sweet. Can you enumerate the blessings you have because you've got the word of God? Psalm one oh three says, "Bless the Lord for his many benefits." Think of forgiveness. My goodness. Before you were saved, maybe some of you have never known a day. I I know people like that, that they've just never known a day that they weren't the Lord's. Uh, brought up in a family of faith and never really veered off the path. Um, that doesn't describe a lot of us. And so that sense that Jesus has forgiven my sins, the words I've said, the thoughts I've had, the actions I've taken, he's forgiven them. And a weight is lifted off, like in Pilgrim's Progress, that knapsack falls off the back, and there's a lightness. "Come to me, you who are weary and happy burden, and I will give you rest." Forgiveness itself. But um there's so much more than that. How many times have you been comforted, encouraged, challenged, convicted by God's word? How often have you encouraged somebody else with God's word? It's the very words, even Peter said, "Lord, where would we go uh to find words of eternal life?" This book reveals to us powerful words for eternity. Um, and so the word is sweet, but it's also sour. Well, think about it. Sometimes you're not too happy with what the word says, are you? You'd like to disagree with God, and you have disagreed with God, like I have. Um, "I could do it better, God. Why did you do that? Why do you think like that, God?" Um, and so the word says some things that we don't like to hear. And if we, who belong to Jesus, don't like to hear them, you can imagine those who live in darkness, they don't wanna be exposed to the light, and this word is a lamp unto our feet. And so this light is exposing and exposes the depth of darkness in our own hearts. So it's sour, it can get you in trouble. Look at the lives of the prophets, most died. Uh, and even today, those who take word into a foreign land, and even here in the States, um get into trouble for it. Um, and in John's time, remember, some lost their jobs, some lost their possessions, some lost their lives because of this word. It's dangerous, uh, and it can turn the stomach sour. Um, Jesus says this in Matthew sixteen, twenty-four through twenty-seven. "Then Jesus said to his disciples, 'Whoever wants to be my disciple must deny themselves and take up their cross and follow me; for whoever wants to save their life will lose it, but whoever loses their life for me will find it. What good will it be for someone to gain the whole world yet forfeit their soul? Or what can anyone give in exchange for their soul? For the Son of Man is going to come in his Father's glory with his angels, and then he will reward each person according to what they have done. There's a price to pay. There's a price to pay if you don't follow, but there is a price to pay if you do follow. You give up your life, you pick up your cross." Uh, John sixteen, thirty-three, "I've told you these things so that in me you may have peace. In this world you will have trouble." Why? Because of his word. "But take heart, I've overcome the world." He is with us. Jim Elliott says, "He is no fool who gives what he cannot keep to gain what he cannot lose." So what do we have to lose? We think a lot, but there's a lot more if we refuse his word. And so we're gonna finish here. John turns it, takes it in his mouth, eats it, and his stomach turned sour. Then I was told by this voice from heaven, by Christ, "You must prophesy again." This word about, some people think it means against. The word can either, that um preposition can either mean about or against. You must prophesy about many peoples, nations, languages, and kings. Um, and so that against comes from, this is the prophecy to get them to repent, what he's doing here. So this whole book is part of his prophecy. Um, notice this intentionality in the last two trumpets we saw of the mouth. Remember, lion's teeth, lion's mouth, um that, and we're going to find that out of the mouth of the beast, out of the mouth of Satan himself, come horrible things. But out of John's mouth is to come the gospel. So what is thought is in this scroll, yes, it's part of the bigger scroll, but what is emphasized here is the gospel. John is to take the gospel to many peoples, nations, languages, and kings. This um four-fold um grouping of people appears seven times in Revelation. Five have the same categories, but there's a different sequence. This is one of those that trades out a word. So instead of tribes, you get kings here. And um it could be because that angel has stood authoritatively um and declared, and those kings bear the authority of Christ on earth, either for good or for ill. We've gotta stop here, and I hear the Advent Party music, so I've got to go. But let me pray, and then stay with it. You, after this chapter, you, we've got one more chapter together for this semester. Hang in there, remember, God is with you. He sends his angels to strengthen you. Uh, and so you will be strengthened in the way that Christ was strengthened in the garden of Gethsemane. Lord, we thank you. We thank you for that rainbow. We thank you for the reminder. We thank you for this angel who descended and spoke to John. We thank you for your gospel that is clear, it bears the words of truth, and we need those words, for Father, we need them as your children, as those you've sealed. And we ask you to speak powerfully to us through your word, Lord. Bring us to our knees. Let us repent of those times that we have betrayed you, that we've denied you, that uh we've acted like the world, Father. So we too repent, knowing that you have forgiven us. Father, we pray for the world, we pray for our neighbors, we pray for those who need this word, who have not repented. And we pray that our lives, not just our lives themselves, but our words, we communicate to them the important message that every man is going to stand before you, Lord. and give testimony of his life, whether it was submitted to you or whether it rebelled. Father, give us your power, your Spirit, to spread your word in this world. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.